All right, so at this time I'm going to call to order the Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five City Council Regular Meeting. All rise of the President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor King?
Here.
Councilwoman Niner?
Here.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Here.
Councilwoman Ebo?
Here.
Councilwoman Dumber?
Here.
Corn being present, if everybody has had an opportunity to review the agenda as presented, are there any objections to the agenda as presented? Hearing no objections, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. You all have the consent agenda in front of you, are there any objections to the consent agenda as presented?
I would like to object on the consent agenda.
Are you wanting to move an item off?
Not at this time, I'm okay with it, but I would like to...
You also want to vote for the consent agenda?
Don't, I do want to vote for the consent agenda.
You want to vote?
I want to vote.
Okay.
I vote on the consent agenda.
That's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking for.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Niner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
No.
Councilwoman Ebo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dumber?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda is approved. This time, I would like to open the floor for public comment, if you would like to address City Council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, I'll limit your remarks to three minutes, please. First exciting item for the night is an audit presentation. You gonna take that, Amy?
Yes, I'm gonna... It's on my chair. I'm gonna start it here. Okay, so tonight I am going to present our March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five audit presentation, actually our auditing firm, CLA, Cliff, Larson, Allen will be presenting, so I'm gonna put them on here on Microsoft Teams.
Hello, Amy?
Way too excited, sir.
Did I scare you?
Way too excited.
Okay, well, you're actually on some of our screens here, so everybody can see you. And Allison, so I'll pull my video off, though. Thank you. I don't want her to be on hold. Okay.
Do you want me to whisper?
No, I didn't know how loud it was.
You were just too excited to start.
Well, that's because the Vikings won yesterday and I went to the game, so, yeah, I am a bit wired yet today.
So, yeah, you can start the presentation, do you want me to pull it up or do you want to?
Well, I'll let, um, if you can pull it up, that sounds good, because then I can really just focus on talking, so, and I don't know if I'll see it then, if you've got it showing on a different screen or something there?
I do.
I think you'll be able to follow.
Yeah.
All right, you just tell me when I can go with the cover page. Oh, there we go. It's loading, there we go, cool, all right. Well, hey, quick introductions, I'm Doug Holst, I'm a principal with Cliff, Larson, Allen, been auditing cities and counties for like, a long time, a third of a century, like thirty-three years, maybe thirty-four, but who's counting, right? And with me is Allison Goram, and she is the in charge senior for your audit, Allison, I think you've been probably on this audit three years?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, nine, ten years.
Very good, and, the audit, um, was finalized and issued this morning, so we weren't able to get you printed copies of the reports yet, but since it's always good to find out how the audit went, we wanted to get on your agenda right away, hope that's okay. I can't hear anything, so must be awesome, very good, okay. So, as in the previous years, we'll just walk through this PowerPoint, so on the next page is the agenda, I'll go through, well, we kind of already did the introductions and there's some things we gotta go over from auditing or two back two pages, please, Amy? I'm talking fast, but not quite that fast. How many minutes do we got here? I should check that. Fifteen minutes or so?
Three, three minutes, no, I'm just kidding, you're right, you have a little more.
Okay, I'll try to do it. All right, so page three, we already touched on the audit team, we had back and the Dean helping us as well with it. On the next page, all right, so, when we do audits, um, yeah, next page, please, Amy, audit standards dictate the testing we do and the reporting that we do, and we communicate that generally through a separate letter, which, um, you will receive a printed copy here shortly, um, but on slide four, I'm just gonna hit five points, it's very boilerplate, it's similar to last year, but, um, if we have difficulties in performing the audit, we're required to communicate that to you, happy to report no difficulties, um, we didn't have any disagreements with management as we performed the audit, um, so that, uh, is good as well, if we had disagreements, we would be telling you about it, but, uh, no, overall, the audit went very well, you had some new stuff going on, uh, for fiscal twenty-five, a lot of new debt that you, and projects going on, so, you know, with that, that generally requires some additional testing, but I want to say that Amy and all the staff, people there, uh, were very helpful and responsive to our requests and just wonderful people to deal with, um, so, we want to thank you for, uh, being kind to your auditors, not everybody is, a lot of people are, but not everybody, so thank you for that. All right, so page five, we tested controls of the city, and there's just two required, um, things that were required, I wonder if we are, you're on page six, Amy, can you go back one?
I'm gonna work the page around, okay, go ahead, I'm back.
You're kind of faster than me, so that's okay, so, we're just required to communicate to you, uh, items that come up as part of the audit, they're, these two were in there last year, they're very common, uh, I'll just hit the highlights, you know, we helped with the clerical piece of putting your eighty-page financial statement report together, we don't enter any journal entries into your accounting system or anything like that, that's all done by city staff, but, we just helped with the clerical piece of putting the financial statements together, we got a software that, that is pretty slick that does it for us, so, uh, we're just required to let you know that, and then we did have a couple audit adjustments, but not a ton by any means, there was, it's been a few years ago back now, but there was one city I audited where we had a hundred and eighty audit adjustments, and I kid you not, I think every number on their financial statements was wrong, that was a very hard audit, that is not what's happening at the city of Pleasant Hill, it was truly just a couple, so, uh, overall, uh, that part of the audit, there's nothing earth-shattering or, uh, concerning at this point. The next page, some good news, um, there's another bucket of communications called significant deficiencies, and if you have those, we gotta let you know about them, but happy to report there are none for twenty-five or last year. Any questions so far, otherwise we'll hop into the, how the city did financially.
Keep going.
We're good, yeah.
All right, then the next slide, um, so as in the past, we, we look at how the city's doing overall financially, and then we'll get into more the, how each fund did, but this slide looks at the city's total net position, it's basically you take your total assets minus your total liabilities, and that gives you the city's net position is what it's called, but if you got a personal business or a personal balance, you might think of it as your net worth, so, it's better to have more assets than liabilities, and for the year, the city's net position went up about eleven thousand, and about one-fourth of its total net position is unrestricted, that means there aren't, uh, strings attached to it by, uh, state code or state statutes or grant agreements, um, or bond documents, so, um, it's down a little bit from the prior year, but I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that you had a lot of construction activity going on in fiscal twenty-five, so, in, if you look at the chart, it's kind of been increasing over the years, so that's always a good indicator of financial health. Next page, we just look at the general fund, that's the city's main operating fund, and for the year, you can see the fund balance, total fund balance was up about five hundred thousand, and the unassigned fund balance, this is, uh, fund balance, reserves, that also aren't restricted by statutes or grant agreements, so, um, it was up about four hundred thousand for the year, if you look at the chart, you have accumulated about eight and a half months of expenditures in unassigned fund balance, last year is about ten point six, so, that's basically unchanged, and that is, uh, the word I wrote down is strong, you have strong, a strong financial position in the general fund, there's various organizations, uh, nationally that recommend no less than five months, that's the floor, like, no less than five months, uh, is a good amount of reserves, um, you're definitely above that, I would envision that in fiscal twenty-six, the spending of the remaining unspent bond proceeds for the projects, that might dip a little bit, uh, next year, but that's just more due to the fact that your expenditures, um, good chance will go up next year, because of the one-time capital projects. The next page, we got a couple pie charts where we're like, okay, where's the city governmental fund revenues, we're excluding the water, sewer, trash operations, this is just the governmental funds, the parts transportation, and the general fund, ARPA fund, debt service capital project, so, if you compare the two years, like, the, the piece of pie, there's, uh, the grants and donations in two thousand and twenty-four were fifteen percent of the total revenues that came into the city's governmental funds, and that dropped down to, um, four percent in twenty-five, and that's all due to the ARPA funding, uh, there's a lot more recognition of revenues for ARPA money in twenty-four than there was in twenty-five, and, uh, taxes and special assessments, uh, make up just a little bit over fifty percent of the total revenues, um, fifty-four percent in twenty-four and fifty-three percent in twenty-five, so, you know, as we're doing our testing, we do a lot of analytics, we read the minutes, we do a lot of inquiries, um, and, that gives us a good idea of what to expect, you know, with the revenues, and we definitely expected to see a drop in the grants and donations, because there was much more ARPA recognition in the prior year. So the next page looks at where you, the governmental funds spent their money, um, in total, the expenditures increased about eleven point one million, the biggest chunk of that was, if you look in the twenty-five pie chart, capital, like, fifty-six percent, that's the spending of the bond proceeds, um, and as soon as you have a huge spike in expenditures in a particular area, that's gonna throw off sort of the overall percent, uh, slices of the pie, let's say, so, uh, overall, that's kind of how the city looks overall, um, the next page, we look at, uh, the long-term debt, and if you look at the chart, there's a big spike with the black line there, that's the two thousand and twenty-four GO bonds, so, um, we knew that was out there, I think, Allison, it was maybe even in a subsequent event, known last year, if I remember right, because we knew it happened after a year, and she's shaking her head, so that means that my memory isn't terrible yet, so that's good, uh, but as part of the audit, we made sure that all the debt payments were made according to the repayment schedules, there were no issues there, there were some older GO bonds, general obligation bonds that were paid off in fiscal twenty-five, the certificates of participation payment decreased the outstanding balance by a hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, so, overall, um, as far as the city's long-term liabilities, those kind of came in where we expected based on our testing. Next page, we look at the proprietary fund liabilities, there are some revenue bonds that are outstanding, I think there's maybe just one year left, that's the revenue bonds, there's a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar decrease in that outstanding liability, uh, there was also two point six million of new, uh, water sewer bonds in, it says two thousand and twenty-four, but that's calendar year two thousand and twenty-four, I think, uh, but it flows through your two thousand and twenty-five financials, um, and, that's about it there, so, now we'll drill down a little, little more in depth on how each fund did, so the general fund, its revenues were up about five hundred and sixty thousand, operating expenditures were up about six hundred and fifteen thousand, then there's some other things that happen at the city where your money will get transferred from one fund to another, um, and you roll it all together, and the city's general fund's fund balance increased about four hundred and seventy-nine thousand for the year, uh, if you look at the chart, you can see that for the last two years, the revenues have exceeded the expenditures by just a little bit, um, but I all know, uh, general fund is in good, pretty good shape financially, I was just, you know, yeah, and based on that, the earlier slide, yeah, you got good reserves in the general fund. The transportation fund, uh, revenues were up about sixty-four thousand for the year, expenditures, a big increase of about eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, um, I believe that was, because that's where your sales tax gets recorded, I believe, and there was a spending down, some of that sales tax money that had come in. For the year, the transportation fund's fund balance, um, decreased about two hundred and eighty thousand then, and, with, due to the nature of this fund, you're gonna collect sales tax, gonna collect sales tax, gonna collect it, and then you're gonna have a big project, so, um, that seemed pretty normal from, uh, what we've seen in other governmental entities with sales tax. Next page, uh, park fund, revenues, um, were up about six, uh, thirty-four, no, sorry, revenues were down about thirty-four thousand for the year, expenditures were up about eighty-eight hundred, um, for the year, after some other transfers in and out, it nets to, its fund balance, uh, increased about seventy thousand for the year. The sewer fund, uh, there are sewer operations for the year, revenues were up about a hundred and thirty-six thousand, expenses were up about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and again, last two years, the revenues have exceeded the expenses. The next slide is the water operations, and for the year, its revenues were up about eighteen thousand, the expenses were up about four hundred and twenty-three thousand, um, which is a bit of a jump on the expense side, and do, from doing some digging, there were some additional connection fees, I think, and also increase in the rate that you're being charged, uh, for the water, that sound familiar, Amy? Or Allison? Maybe some? I think that's right, from what I could tell, real quick, in prepping, um, and then trash, that's usually been pretty close to break even, the revenues were up about twenty-two, just about twenty-three thousand, expenses were up about twenty-eight thousand, and, uh, if you look at the last three years in the chart there, the, the gap between the revenues and expenses has been pretty consistent, so, uh, nothing else unusual there, so, as far as wrapping it up, you know, some highlights, your fund balance in the general fund is still very strong, it was up about four hundred and eighty thousand for the year, total fund balance was an increase of seven point one million, and that's because at the, as of three thirty-one twenty-five, you still had, oh, about seven million of unspent bond proceeds. Uh, maybe even a tad bit more than that, but, uh, that accounts for the big increase, and I would assume if you spend all those bond proceeds in fiscal twenty-six, that your fund balance is gonna drop back down, and, uh, from a government-wide perspective, it was pretty much a break-even year when you roll all the revenues and expenses together, it was up eleven thousand bucks, that's pretty small for, uh, the operations the size that the city has going on, the governmental activities, net position was up about two hundred and forty-four thousand, the business type, which includes water, sewer, and trash, was down about two hundred and thirty-two thousand, you net those two together, and it reflects that basically break-even year on a citywide basis. So, with that, we got, I want to thank you all for, uh, allowing us to serve you, and, um, just trying to think, there was a new accounting standard that needed to be implemented this year, and it required, I think Amy probably did the vast majority of that account, but needed info from other people, but it was about how your compensated absences gets reported on your financials, yeah, it changed it a little bit, but not significantly, except, I gotta double-check here, something. We didn't have to restate, right, Allison? No, okay, so, yeah, it was a lot to do for nothing, basically, because the accounting standards boards, they just come up with all these new things to report, so, cities, counties, schools, all the governments can put a lot of effort into it, a lot of times it doesn't really change your financial reporting, and that's kind of what we, uh, encountered for implementation of that new standard, for three thirty-one twenty-six, I don't believe there's anything that will have a huge impact for Pleasant Hill, but for three thirty-one twenty-seven, there's kind of a biggie on the horizon, and your financial statements are, are going to be looking different, so when I hear that, it sounds like retirement instead of... But I'm not planning on retiring, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to deprive myself of the opportunity to learn about all these new accounting standards, so, with that, thank you all again for allowing us to serve you, if you have any questions, we'll do our best.
Councilwoman, I don't have any questions. I think it's good, thanks, Doug and Allison.
All right, thank you, have a good one.
You too.
Bye-bye.
So next turn, I'm gonna make her interview you, she asked me a question, and I didn't understand any of the words she used. All right, anything else, Amy?
No, that's all, thank you.
Any questions from the council? When will the, when will their report be out?
I just got a, uh, email copy, I can email you guys all the copy, and then we will put it on the website, and we'll put this presentation on there, too.
Excellent. All right. Next item is a special request application from the Pleasant Hill Historic District on a fee waiver request for the memorial building.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't really have any other additional information other than what is already in your packet, um, the Pleasant Hill Historic District is hosting their longest farm-to-table event on September twenty-eighth, um, it's on First Street in downtown, uh, this event is, and the street closure has already previously been approved by council, um, but their request is, they have reserved the memorial building, um, in the event of inclement weather, um, and then they're just requesting that the rental fee be waived for this event, um, if you have any questions, I think, I'm sorry, Martha is here to answer those for you, if you have any.
You just doing this in case it rains?
In case it rains. I think it's supposed to be pretty good, so...
Yeah, so am I.
Yeah, there's a big turnout, so...
What time does it start?
Five, 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 I think it's, yeah, yeah, I think it's supposed to be, yeah, five.
All right, any questions from council members?
No, I'm just sorry, I'm gonna miss it, I have a prior obligation, but...
Chief's game?
No.
Yeah, there's that.
There's that.
I, I think it looks phenomenal, and I think it's a great thing you guys are doing.
Thank you.
I love the idea, are we voting on this right now?
Yes.
Because I felt like in the workshop, we already decided that we decided that nonprofits aren't going to be fifty percent off no matter what, I thought we discussed that in a workshop and a...
That was my understanding as well.
Okay.
Jeff, do you remember that discussion?
We talked about it a lot, I do remember the discussion, yes, but I don't know if we actually decided and voted on anything that I know.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Martha Drazny, um, from Pleasant Historic District, so, um, more than likely, we won't need it, because they, well, it looks like it's supposed to be pretty good, but as per, um, looks like kind of what's been happening throughout with other nonprofits and groups, um, been given the, um, ability to not have to pay fees, it's a new event this year, so we thought we would come and we would ask for consistency, and, um, for consistency in fairness, so, that's why I'm here, so, thank you.
All right, Martha, just so you know, it was a discussion that we had had about just setting up so that everybody is the same, so, um...
It's good to be the same.
It is, just trying to be consistent.
Yeah, we did.
I don't think we helped, we were able to do that, did I?
Yes, we did.
Okay. All right, so do I have a...
Did we vote when that was gonna be effective, or?
We did it with the part of fees.
Oh, okay.
I would, I would only add that, I would only do fifty percent if they use it.
Correct, yeah, and it's only if they use it, if they don't use it, then, of course, they don't have to make any...
All right. So do I have a motion to do a fifty percent waiver for the memorial building, memorial building on nine twenty-eight for this application, only if they use it?
Or I'm only a motion to...
Do that.
To do that.
I second.
Have a motion, a second, on your favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Do you understand that, be fifty percent if you guys use it, something? All right, so the next item is a park board vacancy appointment, um, month ago, six weeks? Oh, no, it's been a couple months ago, Nancy Baker, um, left the park board, and it was just, she wasn't able to do it anymore, um, we had, we posted it, we had twelve applicants for park board, um, reached out to all twelve, had five or six come to park, I mean, five total come, um, talked to another person who was interested in park board, but they couldn't, uh, be there for that, which will be a discussion that I'm gonna have with council later on that, um, at a later date. After they met with all the people, um, park board reached out to me. The president of park board, Mark Crane, stated that park board wanted to uh, bring Jeremy Howell onto the park board. Uh, he has coached in the system, has kids within the system. He's kind of been around the parks, different things, um, interest in, a lot of interest in parks. So based on their recommendations, uh, I would like to nominate Jeremy Howell to be placed upon the park board. Any questions?
Jeff, did you meet Jeremy?
How do you know Jeremy? I've met him, Walter Doug's the best.
Okay.
Um, Josh Haley and Landon were at that meeting for you, so. They didn't really have anything negative about it. They had, they had quite a few people that were good. This was just to, they landed on. So do I have a motion on the park board vacancy?
I'll make a motion to uh, fill the park board vacancy with Jeremy Howell.
I'll second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Nick, do you have the board stuff handy?
Uh, I can't, two seconds.
Okay.
You mean, what do you mean?
Like the board members? I can't remember what Nancy's terms up.
Oh, yes, sorry.
You sent me a bunch of those and I couldn't find that specific one.
While she's looking, are we live streaming?
No, they got, uh, Kylie put it up to do it and it denied us.
You two block this for a twenty four hour duration that after tomorrow, we'll be able to actually get live streams connected.
You got, you signed up to get your fifty and then they went to do it and you have to wait twenty four hours and then you can do it from that point on.
Mayor, the vacancy um, for that will be, that term expires in twenty twenty six.
Okay. I have his contact, so I'll make sure I give it to you. All right. Next item is bill number twenty five dash three two of proposed ordinance amending chapter forty eight of the city's code of ordinances to facilitate high volume sewer only industrial customers.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, tonight with this, we have Steve with um, the Dogwood Energy Facility. Um, so there is a memo in your uh, council packet um, that honestly, uh, former city administrator Shelby had put together. This was one of the last projects she was trying to tie up. Uh, we've been actually working on this for, gosh, Steve, three plus years. Yeah, I would say it was before, um, I came back in twenty twenty two. Um, so they are, uh, Dogwood Energy Facility has plans to construct a private force main that will ultimately connect to the um, a city maintained gravity sewer line from their facility straight into the Middle Big Creek Sewer Interceptor that's out on one hundred and seventy fifth. Um, the uh, the, the reason for this is Middle Big Creek, or which is a subsidiary of the Little Blue Valley Sewer District, is a wholesale sewer provider. So they don't have it in their bylaws, their structure, that they can take on a retail customer. We are their customer. Um, so that is why we've been working with Dogwood because they would um, have to go through us then to make that connection. Um, ultimately to discharge what is more or less um, potable wa, I mean, it's the water that's been used for their cooling systems out there. Um, anyway, with that being said, um, we did not have a fee structure in place. So a lot of work has been done um, from two sides. One being the um, construction side of things in this line. Um, our engineers have reviewed their plans. Again, the, the city section of the line that they will ultimately construct, that will then be deeded over to us upon inspection and approval. Um, ultimately, it would allow in that area, um, should other development come along. There is now a city sewer um, main that others can tap into. Um, but then ultimately, the other side um, of that was from a uh, rate standpoint. And again, that's the work that has been done um, within city staff. Um, additionally, we actually used a third party um, consultant um, that then helped to determine what that rate structure would look like based on usage um, as well as um, again, Middle Big Creek, the way that they build. Um, they had to change some stuff internally because they do it strictly on a connection basis. Uh, but again, out there, uh, there will be flow meters that are installed to um, capture what that flow is going into there. So what you have in front of you this evening um, is a proposed bill. Um, I don't have that number right here. Okay. Bill number twenty five dash thirty two that would establish the um, rate structure um, for Dogwood Energy once that connection is made. Happy to answer any questions. And again, if I can't answer them, um, I've come in kind of on the backside of this project. Um, but again, Shelby did a really good job of laying it all out for me. And then again, Steve is here as well and he can help answer any questions if you should have any.
I'll give you guys a second to look at again. Are there any questions from council?
No.
What are the um, what's an average that you are considering the tablet like? But you're gonna. What do you estimate will be the flow that will be measured? If you have any.
You, yeah.
Uh, Steve Hilger, two three zero eight Southwest trucker, Layne, East End, Missouri. Um, I'm the plant manager at Dogwood. Um, so it would be a staged uh, construction. So we've worked with a staged um, flow to Little Blue Valley or Middle Big Creek. Uh, the first would be about eighty, eighty gallons per minute over the course of a day. Um, but that would be interruptible as needed. And that goes up to three hundred gallons per minute once Middle Big Creek is fully constructed. Approximately.
Yeah, I, I don't expect you to know exactly. That's all I. How do we come up with this rate, this five forty four per one thousand gallons?
So the rate, um, so Raftellus was the outside engineer consultant that um, helped with the rate structure. So ultimately, um, the rate um, per gallon that they will be charged is just a pass through um, from what we would be charged for Middle Big Creek. Um, the rate on there that you see, which is the um, let me get a machine here real quick. The eleven hundred and ten dollars per month. Okay, so Middle Big Creek charges us per connection. Um, so what they've done is they have taken the amount of usage that is anticipated and they know obviously what the average connection uses. And then they've taken that amount, obviously, and divided it out to get um, what the number of um, equivalent of the connections would be. Um, so Raft, uh, Raft, I'm gonna mess it up because you, I had it right earlier and you messed up. Raftellus was the company. So what they did is they took, so in the grand scheme of things, they're really not hitting our sewer system per se because they're tapping, again, we'll have a short amount of a brand new um, gravity flow line that we will be taking on, that they're building. Um, but you know, when you look into what a sewer rate consists of, it's typically administrative cost. Um, you know, operationally, what Tony, you know, he expends for, you know, in the overall sewer system, it's gonna be like your lift stations. Um, you know, the, the, the money you have to put back in to um, you know, replace lines as the years go on because of INI purposes. Again, we don't have that, but we're still going to plan for that. So those are the things that Raftellus looked at when they built in to come up with that monthly flat rate of one thousand one hundred and ten gallons that goes um, you know, directly to us. That is what we will basically get into the sewer fund that will ultimately help with the operations. Um, again, not that we'll have a ton of operations initially, but you know, you have to prepare, you know, years down the road. Ultimately, that line could, you know, have some INI issues that we have to fix. But then ultimately, the, the rate that they will be paying for the flow um, that comes in there that is metered is basically what we would then, we're gonna collect and then pay on to Middle Big Creek because then ultimately, they're the ones that are treating the sewer down at the plant. But it was determined by, like I said, an outside party that took all of our assets. Ultimately, it also looked at this, um, based on all of the number of connections that we have. This is gonna be about like, you know, one percent of those connections. And so they took the total amount and divided it out to get this equal amount for them to pay on a monthly basis um, to us to cover those operation expenses. Okay. Hope I did that the best that I could. Did I miss anything, Steve?
No, ma'am.
Made it very clear.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. Before we take action on bill number twenty five dash three two, is anyone from the public would like to address council on this?
John Self, two oh five South Campbell. I'd like to know why the city isn't monitoring the calibration of this and handling the calibration of their flow meters. Why are we allowing the customer to do that?
All right, thank you.
That's a question.
It was a public comment. All right. All right. Do I have a motion on bill twenty five dash three two, a proposed ordinance amending chapter forty eight of the city's code of ordinances to facilitate high volume sewer only industrial customers?
I'll make a motion to approve bill number twenty five thirty two, a proposed ordinance amending chapter forty eight of the city's code of ordinances to facilitate high volume sewer only industrial customers.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. We'll call, please.
Councilwoman Niner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Emo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dummer?
Yes.
All right, bill twenty five dash three two passes. Next item is the twenty twenty five street overlay project.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, it's that time of year again, we're in the fall. We're gonna start to um, look at our overlay project this year. You'll see in your packet, I've laid out um, several streets that we are looking at doing this year. Um, some on Wright Street at the end, um, Strickers to the new stretch in Bermuda. That uh, that stretch of road has deteriorated quite a bit in the last couple of years. Uh, Ridge Tree Lane and Drive, um, is the, basically the outskirts of Ridge Tree Development there. Uh, that is, we've been doing a lot of patching and stuff in that area for the last couple of years. So that means I have a list. And then Lexington Lane, there's two spots on Lexington that uh, would kind of, almost kind of finish out Lexington for the most part as far as uh, our, you know, that's a higher usage street. So that would kind of finish out some of the bad spots on Lexington. Um, our budget is five hundred thousand for this year for twenty twenty five. And these three projects come to four seventy eight, or I'm sorry, four seventy two and eighty two dollars and sixty four cents. So we are um, we are um, working with Superior Bowen through a Jackson County cooperative bid. Uh, Superior Bowen, we've used those multiple times in the past years. So we're, our recommendation is to go, to go with Superior Bowen for this overlay project.
Questions from Tony from council?
I'd rather this, but is uh, precinct twenty two on your radar for the next time around?
Yes, we have, I mean, we're, we're multiple, I mean, looking at all kinds of different. Um, precinct twenty two, there's a lot of other projects that are gonna possibly be coming also with water and sewer and stuff like that. So I'm looking at, you know, the overlay project is not just the overlay of the street. It's looking at what, you know, the structure underneath is gonna be changed in the next three years too. So we're looking at it.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Anyone from the public like to comment on this?
Jessica Elliott, team North Campbell. I just wanna say thank you for, thank you for your question and thank you for saying that because I was going to bring that up. I don't know if anybody else has driven around precinct twenty two, but the streets are literally falling apart. If you go down to the corner of Armstrong and Pine, it's crumbling. It's, it's, there's gouges in it. It's just, I don't, it's a mess. So I would like to see that a little more prioritized when we see newer subdivisions and ours is not. It says a lot.
All right, thank you. Do you need anything from us, Tony?
Uh, I think we need approval.
Want approval for the?
Yeah, we need approval. Go ahead with the contract.
I would say, yes, Mayor. I would like, if you can, a motion to um, move forward with Tony's presentation. Um, and then ultimately, that would allow us to engage or to use the Superior Bowen um, cooperative bid.
All right, I need a motion to authorize the city administrator to execute an agreement with Superior, with Superior Bowen under the cooperative bid with Jackson County and Superior.
I'll make a motion for the city administrator to authorize a bid with some.
Superior Bowen.
Superior Bowen uh, for the overlay project.
I second.
Motion, a second. We'll call it up, please.
Councilwoman Niner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Emo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dummer?
Yes.
Next item is a discussion, uh, Pleasant Hill Aquatics Facility, the city pool, financial recap and cost analysis presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's been discussed to evaluate bringing the operations of the pool back in house for the overall management of the pool. This presentation meant to understand the costs associated with it, the managers in house, compared to having a third party management company perform this workload. Um, these arrows as shown on the screen, they reflect our total exposure for staffing responsibilities. This begins with swim lessons start times in the morning and goes to the duration of open swim or reservation times for swim parties. So this is the most, the max time we would have to have staffing on site. It is a staffing requirement to have one daily manager and four lifeguards on staff for any time there can be more than seventy five occupants of the facility. This goes for daily operations as well as any of the large parties that we have for reservations. This staffing breakdown accounts for our overall exposure. Using this hours of operation and staffing requirements, we calculated the cost of the staffing, the staff using both our minimum and maximum pay ranges for these staffing levels. That's what you're seeing on the hourly cost, min and max, and those transfer down as the, as the math is calculated. Using these weekly staffing costs, we calculated the seasonal costs for each staffing level. We also calculated the uniform cost and work comp rates for each of our, each of the temporary staffing positions. The aquatics manager will need to be a salary employee due to the training required. So the overall burden, burden of this position is shown using our proposed salary plus benefits within the minimum and maximum costs. Next, we compare in-house pool management versus contracted pool management using our, using our estimated seasonal cost for the in-house total. For the contracted pool management, we use our current year's chemical cost from MPM and last year's full cost of staffing. We use twenty four, twenty twenty four staffing costs because the twenty twenty five staffing costs have not yet been calculated with all of the pool parties and um, influx in time and credits back to us. You don't, to have that number yet, we use twenty twenty four as a good estimation. And some additional considerations, um, would be the aquatics manager would need to have some responsibility for the house season. We consider using them as an additional programmer that helps us in that workload. Uh, limited staffing pool for guards. This is because MPM, we've used in the past, they have a number of facilities around the area that they are short staffed or someone calls them last minute. They can pull out resources wherever we, we're doing in-house, be a little more difficult challenging for us to do so. The staff will also need life safety, life safety training and CPR training. And the math that we've used for the, the weekly. And the math that we've used for the, the weekly staffing and seasonal costs for the aquatics manager only shows the seven months for the pool's season requirements. That's the monthly amount for the pool to get staffing hired, brought on board, and then the closure of the pool and calculation there at the end of it. So that entire, that season, the remaining five months of salary, which was between twenty-seven and eighty-three and thirty-six, two fifty, based on our parameters for the position, that would need to be paid through the park fund as an additional red programming staff. So that would be the difference. So funding for most is there in the analysis. So do they have any questions?
Can you go back a couple of slides?
To the seasonal costs?
Yeah.
And when's the last time we've been?
We've had the management subcontracted to the MPM for the last three years.
Three years. I don't have a question, I have a comment, basically. So I like contracting it out because I like the fact that we use, we have a larger pool, yeah, staffing pool for the lifeguards. And we've never had to not, we've never been in a situation where we couldn't open the pool because of lifeguard staffing, correct? Since we've been contracting.
I can only speak to this year where we've not had that situation.
Okay. Not in, I mean, not since I've been back, no.
But I see that as a problem. If we're the ones that are responsible for that pool of lifeguards
It has, has-
that we could, that could be common issue.
Yeah, I remember some lifeguards when we were, when we did have that. My kids were the same age and, yeah, I do remember that being an issue a lot.
So one of the things that Jeff and I talked about, um, you know, as we were preparing this information and, and, um, you know, ultimately the, the presentation, that is something, you know, you do your best to, and we do this with, you know, the same as far as, um, we see this with our concession stand staff. We see this when we are hiring kiddos that are helping us with umpiring and, and all of that. Um, they're kids, right? Like, you know, they, they have other things going on. And so ultimately, you know, we had some, kinda say complaints, but we had some issues this year. We're like, well, we're not gonna continue to work because we don't get enough hours to make it worth our while, which is a valid point. I mean, kids, you know, in the summertime are typically looking. The problem is, is when then you don't hire, so we hide, in a sense, maybe that statement is saying we've over-hired. Flip side, you don't over-hire and you get two weeks that kids are all gone at football camp or band camp or at a faith camp or something else, and then you have no staff. And so it's just this fine line that unfortunately, when you are, you know, the majority of those that you're employing for these positions are, you know, a younger demographic, you know, it is, there is a balance to it that sometimes there is no perfect answer to. Um, and so that is something that, you know, is a benefit when you are contracting it out, just as Jeff stated, that, um, you know, you, not our problem, you know, if they don't have enough lifeguards, again, they have a larger pool of people to pull from. They can do it from some of their other communities that they serve, that we would be somewhat in a pickle, you know, so we would tend probably to hire more than what was probably necessary on paper to fulfill all of the, the shifts that we would need to if we're gonna do it in-house just to try to cover ourselves in the event. Like I said, you find yourself a week that, you know, you've got a lot of them that are gone. Again, we've still gotta be able to maintain and operate the pool at a safe level with, you know, a number. So you either find yourself either A, cutting your hours back of your open operations to make sure you can do so, or, you know, worst case that you would, you know, have to close if you didn't have the staffing. So just something we agree with you all, we've talked about those exact same things, you know, in our analysis. But at the end of the day, um, you know, park board has asked this, previous councils have asked and the desire was to bring it back in-house and is included in your packet in that memo. Um, you know, over the last two years, the timing was just not great. You know, we had a transition in the park director role. Uh, that was just easily something that we knew that could still be taken care of. So that amenity, you know, that quality of life item in our city can still function as normal by contracting it out. But I told Jeff, um, you know, we needed to get started on this, again, based on feedback from council, park board. At the end of the day, we're not asking for a decision this evening. You have all of this information in your packet to review. Ultimately, we would like a decision by the next council meeting on the thirteenth of October. Um, just because, again, as we see other entities or other communities that run their, their facilities, um, you know, we do need to start hiring, that hiring process sooner rather than later. Um, I mean, at the end of the day, our goal would be to have lifeguard positions posted by the very beginning of twenty-twenty-six so that ultimately they can get them on-boarded. At that same time, you also have to begin, you know, their safety training if they're not a returning lifeguard. Um, those that are returning still have to have, you know, certifications re-upped. So that person that would be managing our aquatics facility, our pool, would have a lot of things to get in order. So again, no decision is required. We're just here to provide information this evening, answer questions if you have any. Obviously, in the next three weeks, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to Jeff or I. Um, but ultimately, we would like to have a decision made by the thirteenth, the meeting on the thirteenth.
Did you go over this with the park board?
I have not yet. That's what, I might forget this till the next October meeting.
So ultimately, they will have, I mean, they'll have the same information and they would be able to give a recommendation back from their perspective to you all prior to that thirteenth meeting.
Can you send us a copy of this presentation over? Can you let us know what the park board thinks before the next meeting so we can talk?
Their meeting is on the sixth?
Yes, yep, I think this one.
Uh, seventh, I'm sorry. So their meeting, no. Wait, sorry.
No, our meeting is the fourteenth.
Oh.
Yeah, we have ours.
Okay.
Can it wait two more weeks?
We would probably then just have to wait, yeah, we will wait. I apologize. When I was looking at the calendar, I had that the seventh was the second Tuesday, but it's not. So yes, we will disregard what's in your packet. Asking by and the answer by the thirteenth, we will bring it back to you all on the twenty-seventh of October.
Can we just, for the thirteenth, I know park board won't have met, can we have a discussion over this as well then, just in case we have questions and now and then, so we can have answers by the time we come to the decision? It didn't seem like it came out. Anything else on that? Is all you, Missy?
I only have one update. Is this working? Um, sorry, I only have one update. It's kind of a big one. The port zoning adjustments last week granted the last variance with a fresh tougher site plan. That has been approved, the approval of the site plan. And the variance was sent over late last week to those individuals. So we should start seeing hopefully some work up there in the next, hopefully, few weeks.
Mary?
Um, we've had some new hires and some terminations I've had to work with since Jerry's been out. Um, when Shelby was still here last week, we did meet. I met with Douglas with her and Rap.
Raptellis.
Raptellis on the water study over the phone last week, so I worked with that. And I am starting on the budget here soon, so we'll start that process.
Jeff?
Um, we've been doing a lot of homecoming prep. As float building starts tonight, they're using both our shop and public workshop for different classes. We've also been trying to get to the downtown prep and write the photos coming up here this next weekend. Um, we did have a tree fall out in the city lake. Luckily hit no equipment, no facilities, not anything. It fell right between the cornhole and playground. So we were able to get that removed safely and easily. Um, we've constructed the railing at the high school baseball field and got the African concessions game in function. We have that open for the games this Saturday for flag football. And, uh, the baseball programming opened up today through our new red technology platform, so.
With, just timing-wise, um, with the continued issues we've been having with residents abusing the parks, are you gonna take the camera discussion back to them? Or have you guys done with that and you'll have something once you get there, send what it looks like?
I actually sat through a presentation this afternoon with the company looking at some options, how very impressive what they were presenting. So I'm gonna try and get a, a presentation together for you by the next meeting here.
Okay. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, the power at the shelter at City Lake, did we figure that out?
I, I don't, I didn't see anything that was off whenever we went out there to do our inspection. So I don't know whether it was a temporary failure and it came back on or what. Landen has been out there and checked on it, so I'll, I'll follow through with him. But I think it's actually functioning.
Okay, cool.
Tony?
Uh, seven, that way, one only project is moving along kind of slow. Contractors struggled a little with, um, getting their back tea samples to pass. I think we're on test number five for a section for that. So they, they can't do any more tie-ins or any more connections until they get their back tea test to pass. Uh, we're hoping to, they've been flushing all day today. They're gonna flush, flush it for a portion of tomorrow and then do another sample tomorrow. Uh, soon as they get that back tea to pass, then they'll, I think it's about two weeks, they thought that they would have all the service connections and the tie-ins all transferred over. So hopefully we can get out of the way of the siding on the project because it's been a long period of time. Water towers move along really good. Uh, USG is, has been working out there basically seven days a week, um, for the most part. Last Monday, we completely drained the tower. We're able to, um, you know, it's a long story. We ended up having the water back in the tower because MicroCom had to reprogram the pumps in order for it to run properly. Um, I've spent about three days, I think, running the, running the pumps manually all, every hour. So I had to run those pumps, move them up and down as far as the percentages and just to maintain the system. So MicroCom got all that straightened out this week and things are running great. We're, we're running solely on the pumps right now and the water tower's completely drained. So they have moved into the tower and started to do the rehab inside the tower and finish out the outside block. Um, other than that, we, the guys have been working really hard on getting some cracks and we got them. They're pricing them up and heavily metal downtown. Uh, they've been kind of all over the place, so. Other than that, that's pretty small.
Chief?
I don't have a lot tonight. Uh, just a reminder by homecoming, and homecoming parade is this Friday. Uh, the school did get their MoDOT permission slip, uh, the permit from MoDOT to cross the highway with the parade. So we're pretty excited about going through that process with each parade. Uh, additionally, I just wanna remind everybody that we have the KCVA Veterans Outreach and Resource Fair on November seventh, uh, from eleven to two at the Memorial Building. Uh, we've got lots of vendors, mental health providers, uh, lots of veteran organizations coming in. If anybody has any questions, they can reach out to Captain Clay. He is running this initiative, so we look forward to being able to try to serve some of our local veterans.
Move real quick, any questions for Tony Ortiz? Kylie?
Um, as was previously mentioned, it is homecoming week, so I've got a bunch of posts going out about that. The fireworks and road closures that you guys had asked for are scheduled as well as, um, what Jeff mentioned earlier. They kind of cleaned up some spaces downtown. Um, and I'm gonna make a post-it out where you can take some homecoming pictures just locally and don't feel like, um, leaving town. Um, and other than that, I'm just working on our homecoming as a logo at the end of the month.
Nikki?
I don't have a whole lot more to add. Um, I will note just something on one of Tony's comments, just again, so we don't like instill some public fear. Um, so on those back tea tests, just like when we do any of our water testing, the slightest, simplest gust of wind while they're taking those that, you know, creates a speck of dust that can fall on the, the test tube sample can truly make that test come back and not pass. So, um, just because, again, they've, they've worked on it and, and it's been under works, or, you know, they've done five times of testing. Again, it doesn't necessarily mean that the line's contaminated. Obviously, this isn't online yet anyway, but, um, it simply, a, a small little thing like that can, can throw it, kick a test out, um, from passing. So just to kind of reassure some, some public, you know, sentiment that it's not as terrible, I mean, it, it obviously has to be done and you have to pass, you know, with, you know, no issues, but something that small can cause an issue. But, um, with that, we are just, um, you know, keeping everything going. I am, um, working on meeting with each of the department heads as we are in this transition phase. Um, I was able to attend the Missouri Municipal League Annual Conference last week for some professional development and continuing education. Um, I told a few of them, um, my hope is that we can get a few more people to go. It was probably one of the best ones that I've been to in several years as far as the type of education and the information that they shared. So things that I've learned, I admit, that are applicable to some of the other departments, I, um, am working to share that information with them. Um, again, other than that, I don't have, um, a whole lot other, uh, to add from what they've already stated, so.
Is the water, the water backflow, whatever, is that what's causing the delay on the sidewalks?
No. Um, it's not. I mean, they're obviously in different sections of, um, the community, so, um, I think, I mean, they, I mean, Tony and Missy both have reached out to MoDOT. They'll want to tell you that that's the reason for some of the delays in the ongoing, but again, they left those areas, obviously. Um, but the areas that they have moved to, I mean, they're still working on those as well.
I would say partially, yes. Um, the biggest issue is the traffic control. Because when they get too close together, you can't, you gotta have traffic that can flow through. So that's been part of the biggest issue. According to MoDOT, they'll tell you, yes, we're the one holding them up. It's not a hundred percent true. But they're, they move pretty fast when they get, we don't have anything in the way. We're, at this point, we're getting close to being in the way. It is, it is partially, yes, true, partially not. And I will clarify, Nikki brought up a great point. I wanna make sure that everybody understands that that water line that they're working on is completely isolated from the system. It is not tied in, it is closed off completely until a back tea test passed.
All right. This time I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to RSMO six-ten, oh-two-one, one, two, three, twelve, legal real estate personnel contract.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, RSMO six-ten dash, or zero-two-one for two?
One, two, three.
Oh, one, two, three.
All of them.
All of them?
Legal real estate personnel and contract negotiations.
Yay, all of them.
Have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to RSMO six-ten, oh-two-one, one, two, three, and twelve for legal real estate personnel and contract.
I'll second.
Motion and second, rule call, please.
Councilwoman Niner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newberry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ema?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dummer?
Yes.